Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13. School Board meeting for Tuesday, April 11th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome again. And Natty, if you would, please call the roll.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
A Samurai?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up, agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. First up would be an approval of the agenda. If I get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Announcements, April 14th, Friday, no school, the district office is closed. April 18th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM, there'll be a school board listening session here in the Family Center. April 18th at 5:30, it'll be a school board work session. April 25th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, be a regular school board meeting. Next up, correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, is there any correspondence this evening?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Thank you. All right, next up would be communication to the board. Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. So anyone here to speak tonight? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the March 21st school board meeting, the personnel report, and the treasurer's report for February of 2017. If I get a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Lori?
Second.
Natty, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next up is discussion reports and information items. Reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Lori, are you okay going first?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sooner or later, though, we'll have to start on that side of the table.
Okay. You know what, remind me, next meeting, we'll start with Hall. Be prepared, Hall.
Since the last meeting, I had the pleasure of attending two of the boys' basketball sectional games. That was really exciting time, and I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Palmer and the pep band. I think they did an excellent job. I may be a little bit partial, but I think they did an excellent job keeping up our momentum during that game, those games as well. I also attended the Highland Elementary Girls Night, and I helped facilitate that program. We had over 50 girls attending from all three of the elementary schools, and it was really a great night for the girls. I also attended the Citizens for Safer Streets Community Meeting that took place, and I thought that there were some really good discussion items at that meeting. And then, just prior to this meeting, I was at the Columbia Academy 5th Grade Family Open House, and I thought that that was a really great way to introduce the families to the curriculum and kind of get us ready for middle school. And then, with that, too, the web leaders did an excellent job. They were really doing a great job welcoming families in and running around on the tour. So it was great.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes, I've had a couple of meetings. I went to 916, that's the monthly board meeting. 916 is, for anybody who doesn't know, it is a collaboration of school districts where we collaborate together with a superintendent is also there to help us with our collaboration. But we work with special education programming and how to, especially as a smaller district, we're able to better serve our students that have special needs. And then, there's different types of educational opportunities and opportunities to work with other districts on other programming. So that's always pretty awesome. One of the, we did get an update on the buildings. Right now, we're in the process of, half of Lake Elmo, the Lake Elmo facility, Pankalo, is nearly done. We've had a lot of rains, so that's kind of, half the building is done, and the other half is still kind of just beams and stuff. But that is on schedule, so we're excited to see that. That's going to be very similar in nature to the, to Kerner Blue. So I look forward to whenever that's available, if anybody would like to attend, any of the board members would like to attend and get a tour of that facility. I think that's great. There is also going to be a tour of the South Campus and Bel Air Educational Programs at 9:00 AM to 11:15 on Wednesday, the 19th. And if anybody is interested in participating in that, you would actually have to contact, probably Dawn can put you in touch with, the, we have, you have to send out confirmation that you'll be attending, so that they know how many people that they're going to be giving a tour to. We also had a discussion on social media policy, which they're going to be, it's going to be a brand-new policy that they're going to have over at 916. We don't presently have a social media policy in this district, but they did answer a lot of the questions that I had had with regards to the district's responsibility if we were to undertake that kind of a policy. So I thought it was kind of interesting, and I'd like to actually present it maybe for your review, maybe you might be interested in doing something like that. I also attended the AMSD meeting, and we got kind of a legislative update. Probably some highlights from that is that they are looking at increasing the employer contribution to the retirement, the TRA Retirement Fund, to 2% for the employer, because we're probably just a little bit underfunded. We're a lot more solid than maybe a lot of other types of government retirement accounts, so it's still pretty solid. But looking into the future, they think that they kind of overestimated how much the returns were going to be, so that may be coming down to the district. Or there might possibly be a one-time contribution that the state would put in to offset things. So anyway, there is going to be a change in formula, more than likely, in the special ed, but that's going to be offset by some other things as well, because cross-subsidy does not seem to be on anybody's radar. Sorry to say that. The other thing that's kind of interesting, too, is this looks like it's moving through both the House and the Senate on limiting the election dates, that you can actually hold an election, to four or five dates, depending upon whether you're looking at the House bill or the Senate bill, and moving the primary up. So that's something, and changing the language requirements for questions. So I guess it's, apparently, you need to go into extreme detail now, if you want to propose a question on the ballot. And the other thing, too, is requiring the counties to administer the elections, and then, so if we had an election, we, the county, Noka County, would have to administer the election, and then they would send us the bill. So that's all interesting. If anybody has any further questions, there is a bill tracker on the AMSD website and some other information, and I think that'll do it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Molly?
Yeah, mine'll be much quicker. But thanks for doing that.
Yes, thank you. I was trying to really shorten it up a lot, but there was a lot there.
Wonderful information, don't get me wrong. I just was not that busy. I did have the opportunity to watch our varsity basketball team participate in the state tournament with many, many fans, and staff, and administration, and students, and pep band, and the entire experience, I think, was just really, it was phenomenal. It was great to see our students represent themselves as well as they did. And congratulations to the team on fourth place at state. That was wonderful. I also attended a track meet, their first one of the season going on right now at the high school, and had a lot of conversations with parents and community members, and that's it.
Thank you. Natty?
Yeah, I also got to see the boys' basketball team play in the state tournament, and that was a blast for me and for the kids. It was so fun to see them, so excited, and so many of them. I mean, it was impressive. I was, I felt really well-represented, really proud of the kids and the staff who brought them on, whatever, 13 busloads of students. That was logistical difficulty, but they pulled it off and smiled the whole time. So kudos to everyone who worked on that. I got to attend the National School Board Association Conference in Denver, and I think in a couple of weeks, Hall and I will have the pleasure of telling you a little bit more about what we learned. But it was a, it was a learning experience. Maybe not everything I expected, but I learned a lot. I was just at the subcommittee meeting on policy. I've also been able to attend a couple of softball games. The spring sports outside are starting, just like track. That's very exciting. And then, had many conversations with other board members, members of the community, and brief conversations even with Superintendent Kelly, so.
Thank you. Hall?
I attended NSBA. Is this loud? Okay. I attended NSBA, National School Board Association Conference with Natty in Denver. It was good, and we'll be sharing our insights in the work session. And also, I was at the policy subcommittee meeting, going over some of the policies, and not much else.
Thank you. I also, I got to see the final game of the basketball tournament, and also very proud of the kids, both on the court and in the stands. It was really nice to see, fun to see. I attended Valley View had their carnival, if I got the name wrong, sorry. And then, North Park had their Fine Arts Festival Evening. Got to attend both of those. Seemed to be both really well-attended by parents and stuff, so a lot of fun. The Safer Streets Meeting I was also at with Lori, and attended the policy meeting prior to this, and then a chair meeting prior to that, so. And that concludes my report. Next up would be the superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair and members, the Columbia Heights Public School District 2017 Teacher of the Year is Erin Edwards and Stern, and we'll be celebrating her tomorrow night. It's open to the public. The festivities begin at 4 o'clock in this very room, so if you're available, please come over and congratulate Erin Edwards and Stern. She will also, the other nominees will be there as well. I loved, loved, loved the basketball tournament, and I also wanted to congratulate Guard Wendell Matthews, who was selected to be the 2017 Class AAA Minnesota State Boys Basketball All-Tournament Team. That was a big honor. And then, from March 25th through April 1st, it was my extreme pleasure to be a chaperone on the Columbia Heights High School New York City Study Seminar. Thirty-eight students plus the chaperones were really immersed in a whirlwind of studying and activities, and it was really see-do-learn to the extreme. The experience involved everything from doing college visits, as some of you already know, to visiting multiple art museums. They did Broadway and choral performances. They visited the 9/11 Museum. Ms. Scully and Mr. Hodges had them up at 5:30 in the morning doing photography throughout the city of New York. They did two Broadway shows, Phantom of the Opera and Paramore, and they were two different kinds of Broadway shows, but they got an opportunity to meet the cast of each afterwards, and then did some backstage touring. And then, I think when we, the best part of the trip for me was really watching them grow. And then, on the bus coming and going, in the 25 hours it took us one way and the other, I learned a lot about technology. So I learned more about my Instagram account, because the kids made it a whole lot easier for me to navigate. So I want to say special thanks, though, to all the parents, and the sponsors, and the board, who approved the trip, who really made it possible for the kids to go. And I think that we're going to bring them back and have them talk a little bit with you, and of course, in two years, another group will be going. So we want to make sure that you know what we accomplished this year, but it was really a special time, I think, for the kids and for the chaperones. And I'm sure the parents were happy to get them back, but I still miss them a little. I'm used to being around them. I want to make a, put a plug in for the Columbia Heights High School Musical, that it will be coming up. They're doing Little Shop of Horrors, and that'll be April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, and April 27th, 28th, and 29th. All of the performances are at 7:00 PM. They've been practicing very, very hard. You can see them coming in with their props and working, and I'm sure they would appreciate an audience. So anybody that wants to come out, please do. I attended the chair meeting before this, in the Subcommittee on School Board Policy, and I've had communications with multiple members, so I want, of the school board, so I want to thank you for meeting or chatting or texting with me. Thank you very much.
Okay. On the play, the 22nd, is that that Sunday? Is that a matinee show, or is that one at 7:00 also?
What I'm hearing, because it's on the calendar, and I checked this with Casey, is that they're all at 7:00.
Okay, cool. All right, this normally has been a matinee.
I know it has been, and it's just, it was kind of unusual, and I checked with Casey. I said, "Are we sure?" Because we put it out on Instagram, and we've got it up on Facebook and stuff like that, but that's what we were told by the director and the high school principal, so there you are.
That's good to know, as a parent of someone on the play. The, one thing I forgot to mention, you guys laugh, you guys can relate, I'm sure. One thing that I meant to mention in my report is tomorrow evening at Mersion Hall, there's going to be a fundraiser. It's a benefit for Alice Lentz, one of our parents in the community that recently had a significant medical event that took place, and they're doing a fundraiser tomorrow evening from 5:00 to 8:00 at Mersion Hall. It's $5 for students, $8 for adults. There'll be silent auction items, food and beverages as well. So if you're able to attend, I'm sure that it would be greatly appreciated, so.
If I might add to that, the choir is going to perform at 6:00, I think, so another chance to hear them as well.
Yep, thank you. Okay. We shall move forward. Next up would be Item C, which is our community education video. And we'll get Casey and Kristen.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, good evening. Tonight, we are introducing the fifth of our six new informational videos. And I talked to the videographer during the editing process, and he said this was by far the most challenging, in a positive manner, in a positive manner, because the program offers so much. His challenge was to capture all this great information and package the story into two and a half minutes. I believe he met, actually, I believe he exceeded the challenge of telling the community education story. As with all of our videos, the stories they tell are aligned to our district mission, core values, strategic roadmap, and comprehensive communications plan. Tonight, in all of our videos, our strategies that help us achieve strategic direction E of Tell Our Story. And so, we're going to start out, and then I'm going to turn it over to...
Life is about learning. There isn't, it should never stop.
We really believe in that lifelong learning, and that, I think, is kind of what community is all about.
Good job, high five.
From early childhood through adulthood, community education programs are not only about education, but they're about community building.
Early Childhood is a program that focuses on the whole child and the family, from birth through five.
We have curriculum planned around their developmental milestones. It's a really good chance for children to come, practice social skills.
There are classes that are ages birth through five, toddler only or infant only. Early childhood family education is great for parents to form a community and engage with other parents.
Adventure Club is for our school-aged children, kindergarten through 5th grade. We have a guided group time. We do science experiments. We have a homework and reading time, a lot of enrichment activities.
We also do enrichment programs after school, and that's for targeted services. And sometimes, we partner with community organizations such as the library or the Northern Clay Center. Adult enrichment is the program that probably most people associate with community education.
It's a wonderful opportunity. I mean, you can learn anything that you'd like to learn.
Classes in cooking, in dance, in art, in fitness, in so many different areas. Adults who want to learn a new skill, a new hobby.
Life is learning, and when life stops becoming learning, then I think a large portion of life stops.
We want to match these two together.
Here at the Adult Ed Center, we serve about 1,000 learners a year. We offer English classes, and then we also have students who are preparing to take the GED exam.
It's wonderful to see those adults taking on that challenge of learning another language or another skill.
It's making a difference in people's individual lives, in their confidence, in their success, and then that has a great impact on their families as well.
I recommend to always explore your community education programming. It's a gift that the communities offer.
I would invite anybody and everybody to engage with community education, to help them in their learning, in their growth, in their community building. They, too, can be a Highlander with Columbia Heights Public Schools.
And with that, the best person to tell a community education story is Director Kristen Snunkel.
Well, excuse me, it's nice to have many people tell the story of community education. We're very grateful for Director Mahan and his department in helping us to be able to put together this video. We had about four hours one day and four hours on another day in order to do all of the taping, and I think that, I hope that you feel, that the video really reflects the full spectrum of what we're able to provide to the community for lifelong learning. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say I thought that video was great, and that actually really moved me, so very, very well done.
I have to add that, in terms of being moved, that we kept having to re-tape when Kathleen Moriarty, the coordinator of the ABE program, was speaking, because she and I kept crying, because we are really actually very moved.
That's what choked me up, too. Yes.
I like the Highlander comment at the end.
I do, too.
Yeah, it was great.
It's very inclusive.
Nice job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard Outdoor Classroom Update.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, I'm pleased that we are here today, first of all, to introduce to you Maya Lemon, who is our Agriculture Specialist, and she will be co-presenting with me. So, let's cut this up. So Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard and Outdoor Classroom, you've been presented for many years now, over seven years annually, a presentation about the great work and learning that's happening out behind this building in Blooming Heights, creating worlds of opportunity for every learner. And in this presentation, which is really informational for you, there aren't any governance questions with our presentation this evening. We're really focusing on the core values of community, collaboration, and respect. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Agriculture Specialist.
Thank you all so much for making time to hear from us tonight. I really love talking to people about Blooming Heights, because I think that it's a space that really connects a lot of the different things, all of the different things that we're trying to do here as a school. And so, this picture, this graphic right here sort of shows the ways that a garden can be used to touch on all of the kind, aspects of curriculum that we're working on with our students, and I think that we're doing some really good things to make that happen. Sort of, just to share some highlights of the 2016, 2017 school year with you all, we've had over 5,000 students in the garden in this school year so far, and many lessons taught, both in classrooms as well as in the garden. Over 250 teachers have brought classes to the garden or had classroom visits, and this represents all grades, as well as early childhood and family, parent education classes, and many subjects in the school, science, art, life skills, AVID, EL, and others. One really exciting thing that we have worked on this year is a connection with the American Indian Curriculum that's happening in all of the K-5 classes. So I worked with Native educators in the community, as well as our Teaching and Learning Department, to develop curriculum that mirrored things that they were working on in classes. So this was sort of building a new, a new branch of the Native American Curriculum that they're doing. So all K-5 classes had the chance to taste Minnesota wild rice, as well as having a lesson that connected the natural world to the things that they were working on in terms of Native American education. Another very exciting thing that we've been working on this year, we actually worked on this today, was our Youth Teaching Youth Collaboration. This is with Minnesota 4H and SNAP Ed, as well as the University of Minnesota. We have 12 high school students who applied and were selected to participate in this program. They went through a six-day training program over the course of a couple months, where they were trained in nutrition education, that's SNAP Ed curriculum, and then they are delivering that curriculum to Adventure Club students, so second through 5th grade students, over the course of this spring. They also had the chance to go to an Ag Career Day at the University of Minnesota, where they learned about potential careers in agriculture, as well as just getting to, you know, walk around the campus and talk to students at the campus, which was a highlight. Many of them sort of, we left that day, and they were like, "Oh, I could see myself in college now," which was always an exciting thing to hear our students say. Other things that we have going on, last summer, I worked with Adventure Club all throughout the summer, doing cooking, as well as a garden stand, that's every Wednesday from 4:30, or 4:00 to 5:30, so we'd love to have you all come out. And we also do a lot of harvesting, we do outdoor reading in the garden. I worked with the rec department to do bi-weekly programming with their little ones. And this summer, I'm developing pollinator curriculum to, which will sort of be the big overarching theme of the curriculum that Adventure Club, as well as summer school students receive when they're in the garden. Some other highlights, I've done curricular connections with pre-K at Highlands, so working with teachers there to develop lessons that, you know, one month they're working on measuring, and so we brought, I brought earthworms into the classroom, and we measured earthworms, and then have them measure how tall they were and the length of an earthworm. Doing, I've done some project-based learning with Valley View 5th graders. There's a group of 5th graders who have done a lot of research on different kinds of plants, and are going to be going, growing transplants to take home with them. Bi-weekly programming with 5th grade classes at North Park, so every two weeks, I see every 5th grade class at North Park, and have done different things to maintain their garden, and also just sort of develop them as gardeners, and they have become really leaders in that space. They're able to walk out there and see what needs to be done, and initiate the work plan. Also have done visits with high school EL classes, so using that space as a space for students to practice vocabulary and things like that, by doing and tasting, and really being immersed in an environment. Seed starting with high school special ed students, as well as the Columbia Academy 7th Grade Honors Class is doing their science projects on seed starting. So some of the plants will come up here to Blooming Heights, some of them hopefully, hopefully, most of them will survive, but they're doing tests on them, so I expect some of their plants will probably not survive. And sort of our upcoming focus, I'm looking to continue curricular connections, so continuing to work with teaching and learning, as well as our teaching staff, to fully integrate Blooming Heights into classrooms, and then also outside of classroom experiences our students have. Working to create an outdoor classroom calendar and supplies, so that teachers feel that they can come and use that, the garden space without me. It's a, it's an outdoor classroom space that is dynamic, whether I'm there or not, and so also bringing some supplies out there, so that it's an easy place for teachers to come and bring classes. In terms of community outreach, I'm looking to do some family nights. So we'll have several nights this summer that are mostly geared towards the students who are in Adventure Club and many adventures, but then also have four family nights planned over the next year, that will be a time for folks to come and bring their families and their kids out to do some kind of activity and explore the garden. We'll be doing a community ed class, probably a parent-child cooking class in the fall. And this summer, I'll be working with a group of high school students throughout the summer to develop them to be garden leaders, and to expose them to other folks who are working in agriculture here in the Twin Cities, so that they sort of have a sense of what it's like to maintain that kind of a space, and to grow their own food, and also what sort of potential careers and opportunities for volunteering and things like that there are in the field. So thank you all so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I also just want to point out the really cool graphic that the Communications Department worked with us on, so I just wanted to point that out as well. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I just want to say, you know, congratulations on a great project out there. You have touched so many students and adults in this community, and I think it's, it's always exciting to hear my kids, I think I said this last year, too, but all of us that have children, I think every one of them has been there in some capacity, and I love hearing about how you, how you touch in the other areas of their learning with the garden. So kudos to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job blending it in with the rest of the curriculum, so it makes sense to the kids. It's not just a field trip, it's an everyday thing that they're a part of, and I think that's great.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's been really great to see the ways that the garden sort of reinforces things. I was just at Valley View last week planting, I planted transplants with all the fourth graders, and they just did Structures of Life. So, they were able to like give me, like all of this information about seeds and seed parts and all the things that were, that kind of go into that. So, I emailed Shawna, the Science Specialist there, and sort of said, "Your students know this really well." So, I think it's, I think it's a great way for students to get to see that they, that the things they're learning in the classroom matter and explain the world.
And it's really a beautiful thing how, how you had it designed over there, and it's actually a beautiful thing when it's in action, that you can touch all the, all the different subjects with it, and like you said, make it real for them. And it's a very good way to answer the question of, "Why do I have to learn this?"
Yes, absolutely.
We like to say that there isn't a subject that can't be enhanced with a garden, and that it's the classroom with the most beautiful ceiling.
Except for last night.
Wow.
Wow.
It was not fun.
Back to different.
Too soon, too soon, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Thanks. Nice job.
Thank you, Summer.
Thank you.
Next up would be an update on the SHIP grant.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. I am pleased to be able to present this evening an update about the SHIP grant, the statewide health improvement partnership grant. It used to be called program, but they changed it to partnership, which we have been able to participate in as Anoka County invited us to be a partner. This is our second year with the SHIP grant. The core values that this grant really embody are community, collaboration, and innovation. And I'd also like to just acknowledge the principals who are in the room this evening, as they are really heading up this SHIP grant at their individual schools. Columbia Heights Public Schools has been invited to partner in two different ways with SHIP this time. So, this is SHIP 4.0. You'll remember that SHIP 1.0 provided Blooming Heights. SHIP 2.0 really delved into active classrooms, which you'll learn more about in one of the upcoming agenda items, and also really looking at improving the food that we serve and food service, and also some safe routes to school elements. Then, Anoka County didn't participate in SHIP 3.0. We're happy that we're participating with SHIP 4.0 now. So, if you see 4.0, that's where that comes from. So, we've been invited to be both a school-based site, and this is located at each of our schools. The, it's, the work of that is done by the school-based wellness team or leadership team, and the initiatives are based on what each school's area of interest is. The other SHIP grant is the, the work site, and that is where we are a work site and we're able to support our staff in areas of wellness. First, I'll start with the school-based partnership. This is, we are in year two with that, and some of the areas that we've worked on are active recess training, which we did before the school year started, for our recess monitors in the three elementary schools. We've provided two sessions of yoga calm training for teachers and staff, and we've been able to reinforce that with opportunities for them to get together every other month to meet for an hour, to talk about how they're implementing that in their classroom. We've provided physical education materials at North Park and Valley View, and tower gardens, which just arrived, this is a picture of what a tower garden is, they just arrived on Friday, and they are vertical opportunities for growing plants inside. And that is a collaboration also with our food service, where some of the food will be harvested off of that and served in our lunchroom in the salad bars. Other areas, the playground stencil materials for Valley View, and that's a project coming up very soon, that will come to completion, and ribbon cutting on May 6th. Hydration stations have been installed at Columbia Academy, Valley View, North Park, and Highland. Reinforcing that is the rethink your drink curriculum. You'll see how many packets of sugar are in that poster, and those, those are, that's an example of some of the posters hung around the hydration stations. We're going to provide an outdoor sink for the courtyard area at North Park, so that students are able to wash their hands as they are doing work in the garden, and then recess materials for Highland. As a work site partnership, there are three areas that we've focused on. One is supporting materials in each of the schools for parents who are needing to do pumping. And then, we also created this Moving Heights bin for break rooms, so that staff, when they have breaks, can do things that are like Active School Day for students. This would be for staff, and there's a picture of the bin on the right-hand side. And then, also a bicycle for each of the schools, so that when staff are going between the buildings, instead of getting in their car and driving, they can jump on the bike and go between, between schools. We'd really like to take this opportunity to thank Anoka County for inviting us to partner, and here also a thank you to the Communications Department for the Moving Heights graphic on this project. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
I really like that you included stuff for the staff. I mean, people always work on stuff for the kids, and that's a wonderful thing, of course, that's what we're here to do, but it's easy to overlook the staff, the teachers and staff. So, I appreciate that you did that.
Thank you, and it's good role modeling also for the students.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Next up is the Active School Day. We have a host of people headed to the table.
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. We're here this evening to prevent, present information, provide an informational update on the Active School Day. So, I'm here with all three of our elementary principals, along with Director Kristin Stunkel. Of course, Columbia Heights Public Schools strives to create worlds of opportunity for every learner through our mission, and this presentation will focus on the core values of excellence and innovation. Innovation in ways, finding innovative ways to be active and move throughout the school day. So, this is an informational update, there will be no governance questions. But a question did come to us through the superintendent's office about what, what opportunities do elementary students have for movement and activity during the school day? So, we posted a survey, and we're pleased to have 60 responses from our elementary teachers. We posed three questions. How often do you incorporate active brain breaks or brain boosts in your classroom? How often do you incorporate active seating in your classroom? And how often do you incorporate active transitions in your classroom, so that students are up and out of their seats? So, the first response yielded that, that teachers are providing brain breaks or brain boosts in their classroom every day, 68% of them are, and then multiple times per week, 20% of them. And then, you can see 7%, one to two times per month, and 5% stated "other." We gave them the opportunity to talk about what kinds of things they're doing and to share that. We're going to have Principal Dewitt share some of the activities that they do, and there's a few examples on the screen.
I'll use this one. Probably the most popular of, of the list is for sure Go Noodle. These are songs with dances that the kids really get into, all the way from kindergarten or pre-K up through grade five. The students are up out of their chairs, they're singing and dancing and acting out the motions of many different Go Noodle songs. I've seen this in classrooms where the student, a student of the day gets to select what Go Noodle, and they have their favorites. Also, a significant amount of stretching that the teachers are adding in, just a simple stand-up stretch, do a few calisthenics. Often, these are tied to academic skills, so they, they might be spelling out words as they're doing a push-up on their chair. At Highland, and I'm sure some of the other schools as well, but the, the staff were trained in Energizers, and they all have this book. And most of the activities in this book are related to curriculum, so it's how you activate the curriculum and different ideas. The other big skill that we're really starting to see now, after more staff are trained, is yoga calm. So, with some manipulatives, but also just with the teachers inviting the students onto the carpet. A key time for yoga calm is when the students are coming in from recess as a way to restart for afternoon learning. But it is a nice break in the morning if they have a long morning of reading and math, where they will do, take a yoga break and do a couple activities, where they may stretch or do some breathing activities and get up and move.
So, the second question that we asked teachers was, "How often do you incorporate active seating into your classroom?" So, this was about 50/50 of teachers having active seating or different types of seating in their classroom, and other teachers still with, with tables and desks, so for a variety of reasons. And so, let's have Principal Fort share some examples of active seating.
Could you give us a definition of active seating?
Yeah.
Oh, look at that, pictures, cool.
That works.
Yes. Our heaviest users of the active seating are our fifth grade. They, every classroom has, they have tables of various heights, low, low-level tables, medium levels, high levels. And they have those apparatus or apparati there. They have the regular-sized chairs, they have milk crates with pads on them, they have the balance balls, I don't know, I'd call them wobbly stools, it's probably my more official name for them, but they, you have to basically balance yourself. They use those stationary pedals while seated at different levels, and these activities take place at, usually during independent work time. Okay? So, there's, there's still a, a kind of a forum for whole group instruction when the kids are all on the carpet at one time, but those types of things are done when there's independent work time. They have, each classroom has a tent in the classroom, and it's, and it's to kind of promote comfortable, you know, an environment for, for the classroom, so the kids can, they're not as uniform as they might be throughout the, the rest of the day. So, we, in addition to that, we have isolated instances throughout the building, different classes, different grade levels, based on the needs of the children. We, the kids have, some, some of the kids have sensory break times that are built into their daily schedule, based on their, their needs. I think that's, that's pretty much it for the active seating, but it's a way, it's, it's fun to see the kids a little, kind of different, in a different kind of environment, and it's mostly, again, mostly at fifth grade and isolated throughout the rest of the building. And depending on the needs of the children, the kid, the teachers are really good about being able to read students and when they need breaks, as Michelle was mentioning, that all, all of our teachers, they have their own rubric for when the kids need a break. We used to have, we have these things called jamming minutes as well, that we started a couple of years ago, that were just ways of, to get the kids up and moving after they've been seated for a long time.
Thank you. So, of course, all of the learning studios at North Park Elementary have a variety of the seating that you can see on the screen, and then some of the classrooms at Highland have opportunities for that. Many of this type of seating, much of it was sought out via grant or a donation, or, you know, different programs such as that. The third question for the teachers was, "How often do you incorporate active transitions in your classroom, so that students are up and moving out of their seats?" So, here you can see an overwhelming majority said "daily," an additional 12% multiple times per week, per week, 3% saying "never," and some of those, just in me reading some of, they had the ability to put comments there. Some of those were, "Well, I'm doing, I do a small pull-out reading group, and so, kind of the transition from the classroom to the reading group, that's their transition, and otherwise, we're, we're working for the 15 or 20 minutes." So, it wasn't really appropriate for that answer, so. And then, within that, within that as well, there was other comments about, "We have, I have specific transitions or activities for particular kids who demonstrate the need." So, those were some of the others. There are some other examples of active opportunities, and Principal Sasek is going to talk about those.
We take full advantage of, of transitions and make them as positive a thing as possible because everyone knows that transitions can really be quite negative for kids if, if they're not done well. So, it's, it runs the gamut at North Park, for instance, from in the learning studios. I mean, students oftentimes are moving furniture during transitions, you know, to, to support their learning into their next, into their next learning opportunity. In kindergarten, I was just in a kindergarten class last week, and in, in the transition between reading activity and writing activity, they were doing yoga. They were doing downward dog, you know, and just doing stretches and breathing techniques and stuff, just to keep them active. Students are often encouraged to move outside of the classroom. For instance, I take a lot of walks, I'm an active learner myself, and I have a schedule that there are certain students I pick up at certain times during the day because they need a sensory break. So, many of our staff people do sensory breaks for students throughout the day. We also have gym bags, and we have students who, who need more activity, and you can kind of tell, and you say, you know, "Hey, you know, Jimmy, why don't you go take, you know, Mrs. Stern really needs this gym bag, you know, go bring that to her, it's really important, you know." And just, we'll get the kid out of the class, they'll have a little errand, a little job, take a couple of minutes, but they get to move. And we have other jobs, like our students take care of our healthy snack program. So, our older students deliver the healthy snacks, and then the students within the classrooms have the job of taking the snack bins down into the cafeteria to dispose of the organics into the, into the compost pile and to return them to the kitchen. So, throughout the day, we're seeing students moving every opportunity that we have.
So, active movement isn't only a K-5 thing, we also have a lot of activity and movement happening in our early childhood classrooms, so Director Stunkel will talk about that.
As many of you know, early childhood, they're always moving. So, they are, they're moving throughout the classroom, it's, it's not at all a, a sitting in a desk kind of situation. But we do also have a big muscle room, is what we call it, one of the rooms here in the family center, that ECS, Early Childhood Special Education, ECFE, Early Childhood Family Education, our pre-K 3 program, and also our Mini Adventures makes use of. Through SHIP, as you just heard, our statewide health improvement partnership, many of the items that you saw, those, the movable seating arrangements and, and some of the Energizer training, the yoga calm, all was funded through SHIP 2.0. And then, also, we partner with Activities and Athletics for Opportunities. Students after school that are at the secondary level have the open gym time, and they also have access to the weight room and summer programming. And then, we also, a couple of years ago, as you might remember, added an additional 15 minutes for that lunch and recess period, in order to give students the opportunity for more movement.
One new opportunity that the third-grade teachers at Valley View have requested and wrote a little mini grant to get were, were these UNICEF Kid Power Bands, and so, all the third graders at Valley View run around with these little power bands, and as they accumulate steps, it goes to benefit the UNICEF. And so, kids are really, it's a learning, as Superintendent Kathy, Kelly says, see, do, and learn, right? So, they're really moving and they can see that it's counting, and it doesn't only count for their own health, but it counts for other children across the world as well. So, they're very excited about that. So, what are our next steps after we've gathered this data, right? So, as you can see, there's a lot of active transitions, there's some, teachers had some questions about opportunities for active seating, and then also more opportunities for professional development around such things as the Energizers or any of the other opportunities. So, we are looking at what professional development opportunities we'll be offering in this area next school year. We are also planning on providing a list of the available resources for all of our staff, so they know what that is and how to obtain it themselves. And then, we're in the process of seeking additional resources as well in this area.
Questions and/or comments?
I have a couple of questions. With the survey, was that done just on the elementary schools, or was that kind of surveyed at each of the schools?
The results here were primarily elementary. Or, all of the results showed today were element, were K-5.
I guess I would also be interested in seeing if there is a possibility of seeing what that breakdown per school is, and part of that, I- And part of that, I think, I'm wondering if the North Park answers might skew some of those results because obviously with the learning studios, those are far more active classrooms than some of our traditional classrooms. So I'd be interested at least seeing those numbers pulled out and then looking at more of the traditional classrooms as well.
Anyone else?
Totally explains why I carried a phone book around a lot in elementary school.
It was like a yellow pages.
Had to deliver it to the office many times.
There's only one in the whole school.
Teachers needed to share it.
Okay. Thank you very much. You too, Nanny. Thanks for sharing. Anybody else have any other questions? Is everybody staying for the next one too? All right. Well, let's move on to the power of yet growth mindset.
Chair Larkin, school board members, Superintendent Kathy Kelly, we are here this evening to provide an informational update on what we do in Columbia Heights Public Schools around the concepts of growth mindset and the power of yet. So of course, Columbia Heights provides worlds of opportunity for every learner. And this presentation will focus on the core values of excellence and courage. I think about that courage it takes to make a mistake and learn from the mistake and continue to persist through it with that growth mindset. So again, this is an informational update, it's not a governance issue. The question was brought forth asking how growth mindset and the power of yet are incorporated into Columbia Heights Public Schools. So across the district, there are a variety of ways that district-led professional development or meetings or activities involve mindset work. So the Teaching and Learning Leadership is a group of, that represent all five schools in the district administration, teachers, teacher representatives, along with early childhood, come together about six times a year for professional development with the area focusing on college and career readiness and equity in our district. So these are kind of the lead group that then takes it back. So both last year and then again this year, we did work around, around growth mindset. So last year, really honing in on the original text from Carol Dweck. And then this year presented some additional articles and writings and findings from the author Carol Dweck to kind of, as she's building upon her concepts. All of the schools in the, all the K-12 schools in the district use AVID and AVID heavily relies on Carol Dweck's work around growth mindset. And so that's always a part of the professional development. Also, within the Responsive Classroom Leadership Committee, they've done some work around growth mindset. And so for example, when the elementary schools have a book of the month and we're aligning them to the different life skills, including persistence, we talk about the growth mindset there and how to talk to children about it when we're using that. This year, the K-12 math teachers are reading a book called Mathematical Mindsets. And so it's taking the concepts of growth mindset and applying it to math. And then of course, in our most recent College and Career Guides for Parents, which would be the elementary and the, and the early childhood, Director Mahan received permission from the author of a mindset graphic, which you'll see coming up. So we're going to eat, we're going to talk a little bit about each of the programs and schools and touch on some of the specific mindset work that's happening around the district. So with early childhood.
On our family center website, under parent resources, parents are able to access an online copy of this College and Career Guide. But we also give out, we distribute to all of our ECFE, pre-K3 and pre-K4 families, this document that includes the graphic that you see on the right-hand side, which shows the difference between a fixed and a growth mindset. So really, that reminder to parents that intelligence can be developed and that through effort and persistence, not only students, but also adults can gain skills and knowledge. And so the importance of praising effort and really focusing on challenge, facing challenges without fear. And I have a couple of quotes from our early childhood teachers in giving ways of, or examples of how they use the growth mindset in their classroom. This one teacher says that she shares with my, I share with my students, when we begin writing our names or drawing a self-portrait in September, that this may be hard and that is okay. Rather than saying, I can't, instead we say things like, I will try. We talk about that as we practice things, they become easier and easier and pretty soon, things that used to be hard for us are no longer as difficult. So really planting that seed in early childhood. And then another example was in learning some of the self-help skills. An example is struggling with putting on all of their gear, their jackets, hats and mittens when they go outside because we do take them outside regularly. We practice the words that you use and techniques that you can apply that will make the tasks easier and eventually the students will be more self-efficient, self-sufficient in completing the task. So, and then there's also an opportunity for students to see on their cubbies how to, where to place their things and recognizing their names. So throughout the classroom, there are reinforcements for the students.
So next we'll hear from Principal DeWitt at Highland about the work that they've done around the power of yet.
All right. So we've taken growth mindset pretty seriously at Highland over the past couple of years. This year's fall PD in August really surrounded around, starting with a video, really inspiring video to get students, or to get teachers thinking about how to engage learners in putting yet in a, in a negative sentence. So I'm not a good reader, yet. And really looking at what are the, how are the, what is the process or what are the steps to get to the skills that students want to have? So this was a TED Talk that we watched. It was really powerful, 11 minutes, so we're not going to show it to you today. But very engaging for the staff, lots of excellent question and discussion afterward. When we finished the video, the next step of the PD was giving teachers time to prepare visuals for their classroom. So it was being inspired, really, the video was the jumping off point. But then really taking the information from the PD and the video into video, or visuals that could enhance not only the hallways, but also the classrooms. Most of the, I think most of the board members have seen the large murals over at Highland in the stairwell that comes toward the district office. So that was created by our art teacher, Joy Belishus, to really highlight the inspiration of the power of yet over both sides of the mural. So you'll see that work up here. Also enhanced, there are a couple of small posters that we have that really go along with the mural that have statements about yet statements.
All right. So let's move to North Park with Principal Sasek.
We also take mindset work very seriously at North Park and have for several years. Our entire staff read Dweck's work this year. Our leadership team read it three years ago. And we figured that it was a really good opportunity to have the entire staff to read it. And really, our focus very much has been on adult mindset also. So I think sometimes you can kind of forget about that. You work so hard on your student mindset. It's really important that our adults also have a growth mindset. And so really, we've worked on language an awful lot. And you'll find these charts in every classroom and learning studio at North Park. It'll show negative statements and it'll show positive substitutions. Positive substitutions that students can use to show that they're, that they have a growth mindset. For instance, mistakes help me learn. Failure is something that we have, preaching the gospel of North Park, we embrace failure very much. Failure is an essential part of learning. And that's something that we've been talking about for several years. And this really, that concept fits really well with Dweck's work in mindsets. And, and so again, we've challenged our teachers this year to show the same growth mindsets that we're expecting out of our students. And they've done a wonderful job. We've dedicated 30 minutes to every staff meeting, working on growth mindset. It's really been a wonderful year of learning for our adults as well as our students.
All right. We're also working on mindset at Valley View. So Principal Fort?
Okay. As I think Zina mentioned about the responsive classroom and AVID, part of what we try to do is to align and connect lots of the programs that we do. So RC, AVID, we try to do life skills. And with the, the RC program, we have hopes and dreams. And that's just about every classroom probably in all the buildings. But that's something that's done for RC in the very beginning of the year. And we have the kids do it and the adults do it as well. And some, some of what we encourage is the going to college and attending college. And we try to plant that seed at an early age with some of our students. You know, some have more, maybe more immediate goals that they set, you know, academic goals or what have you. But you know, that's, the other thing that we have done is the, the AVID program. We took the acronym WICOR, W-I-C-O-R, and it stands for Writing Inquiry Collaboration Organization and Reading. And we divided up the year, of course, into quarters and said we were going to focus on different aspects of that program quarterly to make sure that we had a comprehensive coverage at all grade levels. And that's basically, that's another kind of a strategy that we did. The equity part of it, I think as Jeff mentioned about the adults as well, we have a strong equity team at Valley View, have for several years. A couple of years ago, two years ago, they read the book Mindsets as well. It's a study group, there's an equity group and then there's a study group. A lot of the same people on both. It's kind of a core of our, kind of our school equity program. They have read Racing 2 Class, Richard Milner, who was here a year or two ago, came to the district and presented as well as to our school. Tana Hashi Coats, they've read, they're currently reading that book. Teaching for Equity by Linda Crawford and Chip Wood, they have read that. And again, what they are, they're currently decided to, they have their own individual projects and goals. And so they're doing some reading of articles themselves and they bring these articles to the, to the study group and then, and they help lead a discussion about the article. They all read it and then they help read, facilitate a discussion about those articles. So, and then I guess a major project for us this year was IDI, Intercultural Developmental Inventory, was done voluntarily at the beginning of the year. And we took from it, you get a school assessment and then you also have the opportunity confidential personal assessments of each, each person that took it. And it's, the attempt is to build intercultural competence in our staff members as well. So those are some of the things that we have done at Valley View.
So mindset isn't only an early childhood through fifth grade topic. Of course, Columbia Academy and the high school also focus on mindset we do across the district. So just some visuals, Columbia, from Columbia Academy, of course, is there in their second year of AVID, it's been a permeation throughout the, throughout the building. So just a few snapshots from different classrooms for you. And then I wanted to include this photo from the high school because recently I was at a discussion with members of multiple other districts and the pep fest topic came up at the table. And I guess I really didn't know that other high schools don't include academics and arts in their pep fest celebrations, that they really do just like a football pep fest. Well, if you've ever been to one of our pep fests at the high school, it's permeates and it's kind of the end result of mindset, right? And so we're about academics, we're about college and career readiness and we can, and if we're not there, well, yet, we'll get there. So recently, we had a, we had a pep fest and again, not just athletes are recognized, but also our scholars and our artists and our other students are recognized at the pep fest as well. So really exciting work.
I do have a question. I appreciate that the professional development has been offered to all of the teachers at the elementary schools especially, because I think that's probably where most of the work goes in terms of the power of yet. But is, was it attended by all of the teachers and incorporated into all of the classrooms or was this kind of an optional? Whether, I know that some teachers do things better than others or, how many classrooms is it in most or can you speak on that?
Yeah. At Highland, it was all licensed teachers. It was required because it was during workshop week. So it was required building and service time, not a choice where they would sign up for different options. Having visuals in the classroom is also required. So there's something in every class. You could go around it and find it in any room. We do a, I had it on my list, but didn't get to it. We do a district-wide or a building-wide saying. So every morning, if you've been in Highland, when school starts, the end of the morning announcements is always, I say, if we believe and then everyone in the school parrots back, we can achieve. And so that, from the beginning of the school year, very first day of school, the students learned it and talked about what does that motto mean? And so that's been a very consistent effort of teaching pre-K through 5 about feeling good about what you can do and how you move forward from that.
We just had a consultant on Friday that helped us with the intercultural inventory, developmental inventory. And it was, it was sort of, it's been a process that we started at the beginning of the year. And we're still continuing to, to focus on it. All of our staff are there. And then in addition, equity is in our rotation of meetings that we have on a, on a regular basis, probably once every five weeks. And all staff attend those meetings.
And in North Park, every licensed person has been required to read mindset. And it's been voluntary and for our nonlicensed staff and many of those staff people have read it also and choose to attend our staff meetings on their own time. And so every staff meeting, we have at least 30 minutes of mindset work. And every single classroom at North Park, you'll find many of the same visuals available. So it's pretty equitable throughout the building.
Wonderful. So I was wondering, when you observe the teachers or other observers in the district do, do you also look, do you actively look for evidence to see that the students are there and learning mindset or that it's being implemented in the classes consistently?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. And language, I think all three of us, language and growth mindset language are things that we look very closely for.
Anyone else?
Great. It'll be fun to see how that spills out into their adulthood and into the way they live their lives.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next up, Director Holmgren is going to talk to us about opportunity for solar array.
Yeah. Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I guess first I just want to, I know we have some new board members that maybe don't know that we actually have a solar array on one of our roofs over at Columbia Academy. And the solar, the solar for Minnesota schools, this, this is something that's been going on actually for quite a, quite a few years. And every year, we put schools into a, into a lottery. And four years ago, we won that lottery with Columbia Academy being picked and there is a solar array on that roof. Now this year, we've continued to put our schools in every year. This year, we actually had two schools picked. So I'm just going to kind of give you an update on, on that. And then if the board is interested in going forward and putting those arrays on, we'll certainly move forward with the paperwork to get that taken care of. So again, we are here to create worlds of opportunities for every learner here at Columbia Heights Public Schools. And when we look at our, our core values, we're really looking at, when we look at this project, we're looking at community collaboration and innovation. It's really a collaboration between the state of Minnesota, utility companies, in our case is Excel Energy, Ideal Energies, they're the, they're the company who puts this project together and of course, the school district. The nice thing about this, there is absolutely no cost to the school district whatsoever. Over a 25 years. Over a 25-year period, they look at the life of this array about 25 years. Really, a savings of that time of $444,000, which is about a $17,000 savings for the school district on a yearly basis. Of course, it starts a lot smaller and it builds as we go forward because it assumes that our energy costs in the future is going to be higher than it is now. The array is a 40 KW array. You can see that because we live in Minnesota, when we look at, you know, November, December, January, because of the angle of the sun, we get a little less energy generated. But the rest of the year, the array does a pretty good job. Here's an example of what they look like on the roof. It's interesting, they've really changed the angle of how those go up the roof now compared to where we started here four years ago. These are quite a bit flatter to try to get more sun. This might be a little hard to read. The way this works is, the first 12 years of this project, the majority of the savings goes, back to Ideal Energies, to actually pay for the array. So, we get about 20... We get about 25% of it. And 75% of that savings goes to them until it's paid for. It takes 12 years to do that. And then, at that point, then we get 100% of the savings. And it's our array to keep forever and we never had to pay a dime to get it. So, it's not a huge savings, but it gives us a possibility to save some dollars. And of course, it's a green thing to do as a public entity. So, you get an idea when you look at the graph. This is really kind of what it looks like. At the front end, we're not saving a lot. But going forward into the future, there's quite a bit savings. And let's say we talked about 444,000 over the life of that particular array on a roof. So, that's kind of the short version. I just... My... The reason I brought it forward today is, of course, we were picked and we have to decide whether we're going to go ahead with the array. So, I will bring it to the board at our next meeting to take action on whether you want to go into that arrangement with Ideal Energies. And I guess, I'm just... I'm open to questions.
Yes. I have a question because I know we're kind of maybe looking at doing some improvements over at North Park. Since North Park is one of the schools that was selected, how would that work with any of the plans that we have over there?
Okay. First of all, the, you know, footprint of the building over there, you know, the roofs that are there are still going to be there. We're not taking any part of the building off. So, the area that this... Where we're looking at putting this is actually over the top of the gymnasium. That's our highest part of the building. And even though we might use the space below in the gym area differently, the roof is still going to be where it is. We've also included... Because we did the same thing when we looked at Columbia Academy. Now, there's an issue sometime where we need to replace that roof. It's built in that they have the cost coming in and moving it. And what they do, they really don't take it apart. We lift it up a little bit. We put wheels under it and we just roll it over. And when we're done with the roof, we just roll it back. So, it's actually a relatively simple way to move it out of the way while we need to do any roofing costs, you know, or roofing projects that we need to do.
So, it doesn't do any damage to the roof itself?
Bill, if I could, I just was looking at the ones that the city did at the public safety building. And they've done it at two of the different liquor stores. Those aren't amounted to the building.
Okay.
It's all... You see the blocks?
The pads or blocks?
Yeah, they're weighted. And it's engineered to where they put blocks where they feel like they need them and everything else. The only thing that may be secured to the building would be the wires that they're running, the cable to get to... To get the power to work.
And the roof is, I mean, obviously rated to hold the extra weight?
Yes. This actually really isn't very heavy at all.
Okay. And then, in terms of like, if they get damaged in weather, is that on our insurance tab? Or is that... How's that?
At the first part, the first 12 years, no. But after, yes.
Okay.
Of course, so we have insurance for that. So, if something... If we had some type of storm come through, that would be included in our storm damage, the insurance we have for our buildings.
We asked a lot of those questions too when we were looking at them. And I think the waiting is for gale-force winds or whatever. So, I mean, their expectation of it coming up.
I suppose there's like a hail size, too?
Yeah. I mean, for breaking them. I mean, even though the resistance to the hail and the impact and stuff is pretty high. It can happen. But the way that... My understanding of the way they're designed...
You would think theoretically, they'd have that in mind in Minnesota.
They take the weather conditions of where they're putting them up into consideration, so...
So, the insurance for insuring them for the first 12 years, I'm assuming it's not a significant expense?
No, it's not. No. You know, when we look at... You know, we really have a big, you know, total package when we look at the... Any type of an insurance product for our buildings. And adding the small piece, it won't even affect our insurance rates. They'll just be added as another asset that we have.
I just had one other question. In terms of maintenance, does it take time from any of our employees to do anything regularly or should anything happen?
They're actually maintenance-free. Nothing moves on this array. They put it up, it sits there. Of course, if we have breakage, that's one thing. But, you know, it just sits there and collects sunlight. The wires, we move all the electricity. There's nothing that moves.
Does snow accumulate on them and need to be brushed off? Or like satellite dishes, that type of thing?
We really haven't... The one we have, we've never had to brush off. Usually, if we get a big snow, when the sun comes back out, because they absorb so much light that it melts right off.
Laura, do you have a question?
Yeah. I remember when we put them over at the academy that we had to do some safety improvements on the roof. Would that be an issue with either one of the buildings? Would we be looking at additional expense?
I'm not sure there was any safety...
Erailing?
Oh. The railings that we put up, that was an OSHA project. And that actually went on every building. So, it wasn't just Columbia Academy. It was all of our buildings that we did that project, too.
I just remember that little expense. I was like, oh, surprise!
I have a couple of questions. So, regarding, I think it was Natty's question with the insurance and damages. So, I'm assuming that any upkeep, damage issues, breakage during the first 12 years would not be our responsibility. But then afterwards, it would be?
Yes. Yes, it is.
And then, you said these have about a 25-year lifespan?
Yeah. And of course, these ones that we've started putting up here the last five years, you know, don't... You know, we really don't have an experience of 25 years. So, we don't know that. I mean, they could easily last longer. But at this point, they've put a 25-year life on them.
And so, as far as the utility savings that go through, you had said that essentially, we will realize about 25% of the savings because the other 75% will go to pay for the equipment for the project for those first 12 years, correct? Who calculates those savings? So, how is that calculated?
Well, there's a meter on the roof that keeps track of the power. And really, all... It actually changes once they get it paid for. So, as that electricity comes, we get these credits on our bill. And 75% goes over to Ideal Energy. You know, when that's paid off, we're actually... We're done. So, if for some reason, we would collect extra, which, you know, they really look at what... Because of our... Those low months that we have in December and January and February, you know, I don't think we'll get extra. But, you know... Actually, I mean, once we get it... Once we put it up, I can actually show you a website you can go to and actually see the actual power that we're generating on a daily basis.
I'm sorry, I'm still not quite understanding. So, when we have these savings, right? So, you said there's a meter and it'll show the electricity that these are generating. And there will be like a credit on our Excel Energy bill for that. So, then, will we like write a check to this company for their percentage?
This actually works nice. Because of the partnership through Excel Energy, Excel Energy actually sends the money to them. We don't have to send a check.
So, essentially, I think what I'm getting at, too, is I just want to make sure, too, that this is being audited by some third party. So, it's not essentially this company saying, this is how much money that you owe us or that we're going to take. But that there's some sort of auditing that's in place to make sure that those numbers are legitimate.
Yeah. It's Excel actually reading the actual meter on the array itself.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else? You're bringing this back on the 24th, is that correct? As an action item?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaking of action items, first up would be the health insurance bids.
Yes, I came to you... Seems like a long time. We didn't have very many meetings in March. But we had our bid opening. And we went through quite, you know, some detail of the rates. The way this bidding process works, the... All these companies need to have an opportunity to come back a second time to give us their best and final offer. When that happened, you can see on page 57 of your handout, we actually had some lower rates. You can see now that the South Center Service Cooperative, which is who we purchase our insurance to right now, actually only has a 1.5% increase in that first year. You see that Blue Cross Direct and Health Partners are trying to buy our business. You see some small negative amounts in the first year. But they really inkled what they see the second year at. So, they really make up for what they give up the first year. Our insurance committee really likes the insurance product that we have. They really don't see enough change here to be changing. They really want to stay without any interruptions for the, you know, all the members of our workforce. And when you look at the actual percentages, I mean, the South Service Cooperative is the lowest. We don't have a guarantee in that second year. But they've been doing a very good job for us keeping our rates down. And we've only had a 4% increase. When you really look at, you know, most insurance, you look across the board, really runs at a trend level of about 9%. So, we're very happy with how the Service Cooperative has been working with us over the last quite a few years, probably, you know, 10-year period. We really haven't had very many increases. So, the insurance company... Insurance Committee really brings forth forward tonight as their recommendation is to stay with the South Central Service Cooperative. Is there any questions?
Looking for a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Next up is a resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions.
Good evening. Chair Larkins, Superintendent Kelly, members of the school board. Back in January of this school year, the school board directed the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. That said, I'm here tonight asking the board to adopt a resolution to terminate, eliminate, and reduce certain positions for the 2017-2018 school year. This resolution is specifically related to unrequested leaves of absence. The position is listed within the resolution document in front of you.
So, start with the motion, a second, then I'll read the resolution.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Natty, thank you. And the resolution reads, whereas the School Board of Independent School District 13, Number 13, adopted a resolution on January 24, 2017, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions. And whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the school board, be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 as follows. The following programs and positions be discontinued due to enrollment, program elimination, curricular changes, and departmental efficiencies. One FTE Assistant Principal, Columbia Academy. So, I had the motion by Laura, second by Molly.
Natty?
Natty, sorry. Yep, I wrote it down right. I just said it wrong. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, Natty, if you would, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Asamari?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Next up, a resolution proposing to place tenured administrator on unrequested leave of absence.
Again, back in January, the school board adopted a resolution to reduce expenditures as necessary. Therefore, I'm asking the board to adopt a resolution proposing to place a tenured assistant principal, whose name is listed within the resolution document, on unrequested leave of absence.
Again, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Is that Lauren? Thank you. This resolution reads, whereas the school district's reductions in expenditures and school finances must include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance of curtailment of programs. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights, directed the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures. Make recommendations to the school board for discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions in order to balance the school district budget. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 as follows. That it is proposed that the person stated in the resolution, the assistant principal of said school district, be placed on requested leave of absence without pay or of fringe benefits effective at the end of the 2016-2017 school year, no later than June 30, 2017 pursuant to MS.122A.40 subdivision 7 and Article 10, Section 1 of the current master agreement between Independent School District Number 13 and the Columbia Heights Principals. That said proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence is a result of discontinuance of positions, lack of pupils or financial limitations. It is not the result of the implementation of an education district agreement. That written notice be sent to said assistant principal regarding proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits as provided by law and shall be in substantially the form as on the notice below. That each and all of the foregoing grounds of said notice are within the grounds of unrequested leave placement as set forth by Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 7 and Article 10, Section 1 of the current master agreement between Independent School District Number 13 are hereby adopted as fully as those separately set forth and resolved here. Discussion? Hearing none. Natty, if you would, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Asamari?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. Next up is the designation of electronic transfer designees. Bill?
I'm bringing forward again this again to you tonight. We have another change in our accounting office over the last few weeks. So, I need an authorization for a new employee to be able to initiate electronic transfers. A new employee we have in our business office, her name is Denise Sunstrom.